Good evening, welcome to the Citroplating Board Thursday, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Held here in the select one here in room at Town Hall, it's a high grade meeting of the structure of like years. There is a possible agenda, is there a second setup? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Six turnings, a continued public hearing of major site plan review and stormwater permit, seven ninety nine, eight oh three, countryway. Hello, Mr. McGill.
Goodness, how are you?
What's happening?
Some site planning.
Yeah, site plan, okay, go with, okay.
Um, without, you know, meetings, obviously, with review. Several aspects of the project last year, the main item really was the run on to Countryway, how we're gonna handle that going over the sidewalk. Um, we worked with, um, Aaron, we worked with the peer review engineer, John, we worked with E W, and we reconfigured the connection. Um, or I think we all agree that it's appropriate for the design. Um, got some technical items we would need with, uh, John on the stormwater. Mostly, uh, showing some dimensions on all the grid separators, we added a subsurface, uh, detention system in front of, uh, eight oh three. So, just some chambers, several service chambers to pull back a little more water. We looked at this stormwater in multiple ways. Two design points, one design point. Um, and I, I think it's designed conservatively and meets the, uh, stormwater regulations. Um, I don't think there was any major changes in, uh, parking, we do, um, gravel areas in the back, um, which we talked about.
Just something everybody knows, this is going to be two approvals for this project. So then we're only approved eight oh three.
Eight oh three.
And next up, it will be seven ninety nine, eight whatever they want, one, so it's two separate approvals, okay? Sorry, go ahead.
No problem. Um, dedicated, we, we had five parking spaces in the back, we discussed changing two of them on the outside edges to ground old.
Now, this supposed to be crushed out.
Well, crushed out, yeah.
So that needs to be changed out of the plant. Right, so are you done?
Yeah.
Alright, so this is, this is a kind of like a two-prong, um, meeting. It's still a continuation of seven ninety nine, eight oh one. Because you're gonna have to continue that to a date in, date in October. Uh, and I've written a draft decision for eight oh three. They're two separate owners, so he wanted two different decisions. Um, I have had several heated conversations with Mr. McGill this week. Um, but I think we can come to agreement on eight oh three. I have been working very diligently on the, on the sidewalk. Um, for eight oh three. Um, for, I mean, eight oh three has a sidewalk in front of it, seven ninety nine is gonna have a sidewalk in front of it. But then we have, we're conditioned that, you know, a sidewalk in front of seven ninety three. And hopefully, the owner of seven ninety three is still in favor of the budget. Um, he won't have to pay for anything, he won't have to do anything except move the sign. I am working, uh, Mr. McGill, Mr. Kevin Cafrey said Mr. McGill had to do everything, you know, decide it, et cetera. And so I have been working with, uh, the T A and, um, Sean Harley to try to find some other money to, at least, get surveys, design though. Because I mean, we've done all the details already. So, um, that's making very good progress. Uh, we have a, we have an amount of money from the Laurelwood subdivision that, um, was supposed to be our trail that was never built. So that can be used for anything, so I'm gonna tap into that money for this. But I'm still working out all the fine details of that, so, uh, and a lot of the things that the drainage, the drainage is not a hundred percent, but it's conditioned tonight. And those will be done, those changes will need to be done and submitted before the next meeting in entirely manner, so that they can be reviewed and we'll approve the next, uh, without the drainage being entirely finalized. But John has come up with conditions that are acceptable. What's on your mind? Uh, I think they're acceptable for the project. Okay. I, I mean, um, Mr. Grady has seen that he, he agrees with, uh, Mr. McGill agrees with that, well, he said, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Um, you know, so, um, you know, certain things, the town has changed some policies in the past few years, and normal developers have cut up on that shit. And so, loan and pay hurts people, and sorry, that's what it is. So I have a draft decision for eight oh three, I don't know if you, um, I think we should go through the draft decision first and then through a motion to continue other one. Um, and to continue the other one until the end. Are you ready?
Can I ask one question here?
Sure.
How can we approve eight oh three? With the others not approving? Eight oh three relies on eight oh one.
He's gonna have to record two sets of plans. So, the drainage.
Let me finish my question. So, if we approve eight oh three.
Yep.
And let's say, the others don't get it, or they don't see. Can eight oh three stand on its own?
No. Eight oh three cannot stand on its own. Uh, but I, I think the drainage issue that is, with this is a minor issue. Or, well, I shouldn't say that, it's, it's an issue that has to be resolved.
Well, I'm talking about things like access, like, you gotta be on eight oh, eight oh one to get eight oh three basically rights.
So, town council has reviewed the access easements, the wording in the plan, and has no issue with that. So, I say, access, all that stuff has to be recorded right upfront.
So, so eight oh three, we still have easement rights.
Exactly, exactly, so I, that's why I put in.
As part of this, okay.
Yes. I put in that they need this prior to building. Where Mr. McGill and I differ in our conversation is NFTs. So we need to NFTs, right? And you told us, but you know, we doesn't. So, you know, um, I said, there would be an issue for eight oh three, as I planned, a probable and a stormwater. And ultimately, there is over forty thousand square feet of disturbance here by the same applicant. It's those two different owners, I said, it's, it's.
We can't have kick needs.
Right, that's right. I tried to explain that to you.
Alright, so.
Yes.
Um, so it's an EPA permit, they require, they have requirements for finally getting disturbed over eight oh plan. Um, we have two separate parcels, two separate owners. Um, I don't know that technically you have to file with EPA, I don't know, can you, we file if we're under? You know, we're sort of being forced to file for somebody else's permit is my point. All those details and all protections and the erosion controls and all that stuff is in your, is within your permit. The NFTs permit is just a EPA thing that sits there, and honestly, I've never contacted by them. You guys have more direct supervision on, on that stuff, so, I don't know that it's necessary, but it's, it's not unusual.
We think it's necessary, I think the top of the list is necessary, please. And, I mean, I mean, the, I, I mean, one thing we've never talked about as part of this development is how is this actually going to be built? I mean.
Like, yeah, we only get one building built, which has happened to us before.
Do we get, only get one one?
One building built.
But we just gonna be.
Basically, the other two get.
There's gonna be a separate building permit for each build.
I get that, right, but we were, we've been through the process, we're gonna build this phases, and the next phases don't get built. Right, which is quite possible here, Bill.
It's, uh, that's probably more economics than anything inside.
I mean, the owner of eight oh three can decide how to build it. The owners of seven ninety nine and eight oh one can decide.
I honestly don't think that's the case here, he is, so we choose to get this thing started.
I, I get you, I get you, but that's, you know.
I know, I know, so if you, if, as we go through this.
That's another feel as opposed to what are we having on this.
But as, as, I mean, I don't know where all the park, we conditioned construction park is on site, I don't know where all the park is gonna be.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, it's, it's, it's one of these things. I believe what's really gonna happen is that he's going to, you know, I've scheduled the next one for October twenty third, and he's gonna move right away on both of them, and it's not gonna be an issue. I mean, that, that's what I believe, but if you want to add things to safeguard.
I just wanna make sure eight oh three, if we're only approving it pretty today, stands on its own.
Well, it doesn't, because you have drain, you have drainage and set things on, on other properties.
Right, so, so the question, so the question becomes if, if that were to be the case, and only eight oh three was approved, so, I mean, you're assuming that eight oh three, seven ninety nine will be approved.
I am, I am, I am.
Uh, so, can we condition this such that if those, if the next phases don't get done, there's your park to come back and sort of adjust it?
We can write a condition for that, yes.
Yes.
I think that's.
That's kind of, that was my one.
That, that's a good idea, I, I, I have this step up, because it's so itching to get started with all of these.
Yes.
You know.
Yeah, but all the time, people are busy, and you get there, and you say, oh, I don't have the money, I don't have the financing, I'll just build it. We'll do a late pre-visit and start with that. No, this, that was just kind of the one general condition.
Just, Jeff, if you wanna say anything?
Um, I'm not, not really, I can sort of go through what's transpired, I mean, it was sort of a frenzy last minute effort to look at some stuff yes, uh, yesterday, and even stuff arrived Tuesday afternoon then. So, um, but I asked for, I was, I was the actual computer, uh, computer file for the stormwater, so I could check things instead of just, you know, reviewing it and saying, you gotta change this, or you gotta fix that, or you gotta do this. Uh, which saved a little time, I think, in the long run, because it was a small change, and I think could be implemented very simply, but needs to be done for the new, some surfaces would have overflowed with the storm where it was actually. So, it was worth a check, but, uh, you know, there wasn't enough time to do a super deep dive into the plans. I could, I basically looked at the issues that remained specifically and checked those two things. Uh, that's what I really had time to do. So all I did is I updated, I sorted the issues, originally committed not completely thought, and, um, talked to Jared, I had a decision that had a few, couple of conditions to address those changes, which they may even have made by now, but I didn't have time to look at all the suggestions or any drafts.
Yes, yeah, they're absolutely, so, you know, Kevin, maybe you can just spend one minute, two minutes explaining how the drainage changed. Because last time you were here, I think that we still were tying into the two catch basins, you know, um, in front of, you know, seven ninety nine, that's all changed, that's changed now.
Down, down.
Right, it's, they're tying into, but I mean, I think they're tying to different. What page do you want?
Six, yeah, say it down, yeah, Jesus.
And there were, there was a big torrent with the E W.
I don't know.
Um, so we, we have done that, et cetera.
Okay.
With their app.
It was your practice? It was practice.
So, uh, in our last iteration to get a stormwater across the street, we had proposed kind of into the catch basin as labels to benchmark for the site. So, uh, that thought process in that is that the pipes were already in place, we wouldn't have to cut the street, deal with utilities, et cetera, so direct connection. Um, John thought it was cleaner to go to the catch basin, it's, um, center of the sheet, and then we'd see where we're connecting, there's a, there's a saw cut through the street to that catch basin. The thought process there is that it doesn't go through two deep sub-catch basins that are collecting sediment, it's more of a direct connection. It, it only goes through the one, so that it's cleaner water, that was the, the thought process.
Is that, is that an existing, yes?
Yes, yeah.
In fact, there's a little more to it, to that, that pipe, that catch basin, there's a direct discharge, and I didn't get
Yes, but.
one straight off, and then it's off into the thing. We know that the other system is problems, problems, it's plugged, it's got multiple pipes, you, you, you know, you're running through three catch basins, first it's only one, and it's directly across the street, and it's deep, so it actually gives some more flexibility to the depth of things to the front, trench drains, so, which we're all working with, because you're at the lowest element of that system.
So, do the catch basins coming from, you said, that's, that's the age, right, those off the, and that's the catch, that's the last.
That's the last one in the series, so you have, it just seemed to be logical to go to the last one rather than the first linked system, yeah, pretty. Especially when it's already been plugged and including it, um, it's been, uh, plenty of others, there's. And even as a pipe that goes down the other way that's completely plugged, and you couldn't, they couldn't even get to that.
The pipe is clean now, uh, they, when they gen it out, the pipe, the pipe, the pipe is clean. And I haven't been out there, but my understanding is that D P W went down and dug out and where the pipe comes in, so that everything is.
As it should be.
As it should be, and I thought that they might be putting some, you know, some dumpster down at the end of the pipe, so that it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be mush, yeah, that mush, and it wouldn't, you know, hopefully, start to grow for going back in.
Yes, that's at the discharge point.
Right.
Which then goes right into that.
Right.
But it's clean, it'll be clean, clean water, yes.
I would just hope that the town takes such tremendous whatever it maintains, thanks, or not.
Or not, not. So, I think we're, I think we're ready for eight oh three.
You don't say, alright. Be forward. That would be you, right?
Alright, so everybody have a hard copy of the one, it should have the nine twenty five date on the way in.
Same.
Yes, that's which one, this is this, yes.
Yes, well, I sent it to you now, it's next.
Yeah, okay. This is a major site plan review and stormwater permit in the village center and neighborhood district V C N, eight oh three, Countryway, nine twenty five, twenty twenty five. I move to make the following findings in fact. One, on December eighteenth, twenty twenty four, the applicant, John McGill, and owner, and owner, and a, and Gill, and Gill, Hoon, L L C filed an application for major site plan review for multi-family building project in the village center and neighborhood district under the Citroen zoning by law, section five eighty, seven fifty, seven sixty, seven seventy, and nine forty. Application included, but is not entered into the following. A, cover letter, D, application forms, including attached, A, attachment A to F, B, climate fees and waters list, C, site plan, eight oh three Countryway, Citroen mass dated twelve and five, twenty twenty four, by rating consultant L L C, consisting of nine sheets. D, architectural plans, five unit residence schematic design, eight oh three Countryway, Citroen mass, by sale architects, undated, had a date of eleven, twenty twenty four, consisting of sheets, A oh point oh, title sheet, A one point zero, basement floor plan, A one point one, first floor plan, A one point two, second floor plan, A one point three, third floor plan, A one point four, roof deck plan, A two point one, elevations A three images. E, stormwater management design calculations, eight oh three Countryway, a city map twelve two, thirty, thirty six, Citroen mass dating eleven, twenty second, twenty twenty four, by rating consultant L L C. The property that is the subject of the application is composed of one parcel. The parcel is block twelve dash two dash thirty six, all of which is outland, the parcel has frontage and access of Countryway, a public way. The property is currently improved, a single family residence. Three, the project is located in Village Center and Neighborhood, V C N, the cell in district, North City Village, N S V, Outer Village, Sub district, O B, V C N dash N S V dash O B. One zoning by law in effect for this project is the by law approved by Citroen Animal Town Meeting on four, eight, twenty twenty four, and, and Attorney General on seven, ten, twenty twenty four, and posted to the website on, in July, twenty twenty four. The project proposed by the applicant consists of five residential units in one multifamily building, M F B. The M F B will have a total of ten bedrooms, there will be no affordable units as none are required. Six, the M F B is three stories and is thirty nine feet nine inches tall from the average finger spray to the midpoint of the gable, which is less than the maximum height of forty feet, as defined in the Citroen zoning by law. Seven, there are ten total exterior parking spaces provided on the eight oh three Countryway site. No handicap parking spaces are indicated, are included for the site. All garages would be capable of supporting an electric vehicle. Parking is covered by section seven sixty point eight, the Citroen zoning by law, a parking in mixed use districts, table two, and requires one space for a one bedroom unit, one point five spaces for two bedroom unit, and two spaces for three bedroom unit in a multifamily or mixed use building, as the site is in the V C N district. Eight, section seven sixty point seven is not applied because the proposed use is residential in the V C N. Nine, the property at eight oh three Countryway does not require a pedestrian frontage overlay zone per section five eighty point two of zoning by law. Ten, V C N, N S V, O B, a multifamily building is allowed, is allowed use by right per section four twenty of zoning by law, and allowed building type per section five eighty point three with the design standards of section seven fifty of zoning by law. Eleven, the base residential density in V C N, N S V, O B, sub district per section five eighty point four of the zoning by law for multifamily building is fifteen units per acre by right and twenty four units per acre by special permit. The proposed project is five units that are allowed by right. Five units are proposed onsite, which does not require a density bonus that is allowed by right. Section five, twelve, section five eighty point four also has minimum fault standards dwelling sizes. Two plus bedroom units are required to have nine hundred square feet of usable floor area. A one bedroom unit is required to have six hundred square feet of usable area. The project has proposed five two bedroom units with a usable area of nine hundred square feet minimum, and units ranging in size from seventeen hundred ten square feet to two thousand forty six square feet, all of which meet the fault standard. Thirteen, no public realm standards are required for this project, no new streets are being created. A sidewalk will be constructed in the town right away by the applicant for project D P W standards. Fourteen, the site at eight oh three Countryway will have shared access drainage set up in some utilities with seven ninety nine and eight oh one Countryway. Easement plan has been provided as well as, as well as easements descriptions. The applicants, as the applicants for seven ninety nine and eight oh one Countryway and eight oh three Countryway are the same, and there is over an increase in twenty five percent in purbius and disturbance is greater than fifty thousand square feet as a stormwater permit is required. Fifteen, the applicant has, was referred to meet with the design review committee, D R C, and subsequently, subsequently met with the D R C on several occasions to discuss this project. The D R C recommended that the planning board move ahead with the special project process. In recommendation, in the recommendation memorandum to the planning board dated April twenty one, twenty twenty five, with recommendations that tandem parking will require new by the planning board, and an easement plan is required as part of parking room of the two properties. The D R C recommends, recommendations contingent on review of materials, colors, and exterior detailing prior to issuance of a building permit. The project proposes cedar impressions or similar siding for the main part of the building, painted trim, launched windows with gray trim, hardy panels, painted wood and metal post rails, and seen metal roof and composite decking. Full earth tiles will be used throughout the exterior interior to integrate the building to the natural landscape and neighborhood. Sixteen, an M F B, as is the proposed project, includes lot standards and design standards found in section seven fifty point six, including a minimum lot size is not required, street frontage of forty feet is required. In North Citroen, Outer Village, the project has eighty five point fifty seven feet of frontage of Countryway. Lockdown is not required, the front yard, building, so setback is zero feet with all room types. The project has twenty two point four setback of the way. Minimum side yard is zero feet in common law with an adjacent build that exists, which this project is not, thus fifteen feet. The project has provided approximately sixteen point six feet to the north and sixteen point eight feet to the south. Minimum rear yard is twenty feet, the project has provided fifty one point three feet. Outdoor amenities space coverage required is fifteen percent of the law. The project has provided point nine point six percent or four thousand three hundred nineteen square feet of private open space in the form of common yard and garden plus curb plans. The outdoor amenities space provided is in accordance with the requirements of section seven fifty two of the Citroen zoning by law and section five eighty point nine B to B. Uh, one, it's a common yard and garden. The building height conforms to the high regulation set forth for the M F B in the zoning by law, as the average height is nineteen feet nine inches to the midpoint of the gable, from an average rate which is less than forty feet, as defined in the Citroen by law. Required minimum street base and wall with, for a multifamily building, is forty feet and a maximum width is one hundred feet under section seven fifty point five B to D. Vertical modification and articulation, I'm just, excuse me, building is forty feet and the maximum is one hundred feet, under section seven fifty point five. B two D, vertical modulation and articulation, no street facing building. Elevation can be wider than one hundred feet if those special permit. The building is forty five feet, meeting the requirement. A street facing
Forty eight, what is?
Forty eight feet, meeting the requirement. A street facing entrance is required and has been provided with one hallway. A waiver is requested for yours two, three, four, and five. A maximum building footprint is allowed. It's not applicable in the VCN NSV OB. Seventeen, and an MFB has general design standards found in section seven fifty point five including more than one principal building is allowed on a lot if the building lot dimensional standings are met for each principal building individually. The project has one building on the lot which meets the required dimensions. The project's principal building and accessory structures are located outside any required front side or rear setbacks except as otherwise permitted. The built to sell occupancy is measured as a percentage of the width of the street coverage. The primary build to zone occupancy shall be no less than fifty percent of the frontage width. The proposed building of the project has more than fifty percent of the frontage width at approximately fifty six percent. The project's lot is not a corner lot. Multi-family buildings taller than twenty five feet are required to be set back or stepped back from the street right away. The proposed building is set back twenty two point four feet from the countryway in front of rock line. The building set back twelve point five feet to thirty seven point five feet, a maximum type of thirty feet is allowed. According to the applicant's architecture, the average building height between twelve point five feet and thirty seven point five feet will be thirty feet tall from the average grade. The average height meets the thirty foot height requirement. The scale of the project is visually compatible with the site and is likely to be with its and is likely to be with its neighborhood and situating. This is one of the first redevelopment projects in this section for situating at the VCN. Zoning by law building articulation standards have been met by the project with the building that is greater than fifty feet in width designed to be as a series of smaller buildings with varying articulation. The building width is forty eight feet. Articulation occurs on the long side of the building facing the driveway. Horizontal modulation and articulation are required as the project's building is three stories and followed. The front of the building facing countryway is visually articulated over three stories with windows, overheads, material changes, and a roof deck. The building facing driveway is visually articulated over three stories, overheads, desks, garage doors, and windows. Street facing building facades are required to provide service relief to doors and door canopies. The project has provided door canopies. The side transparencies is required for multi-family buildings facing the street right away line. Windows shall be evenly spaced and one facade windows shall be reflective glass and the facade blazing shall fall between the either two feet and twelve feet. Side blazing requirements are only applicable to prime facades facing a street right away. The building needs the requirements with window spacing, facade blazing occurring on the first floor to a two to twelve feet and low reflectivity glass proposed. The project roof pitches, roof pitches for the building are six to twelve with the doors at point twenty five. This means requirements remain included at six to twelve minimum and twelve to twelve maximum. The project needs requirement roof pitches. Exterior treatments are provided for the project. Exterior treatments will be ceiling refreshments on senior river designed for the main heart of the building, a lit trim. Logic windows with gray trim, hardy panels, painting wood, and metal post rails, and seen metal roofing and composite decking. Cool earth tiles will be used throughout the exterior materials to integrate the building into the natural landscape and neighborhood. The exterior colors will be determined prior to the building permit and issued a meeting of the DRC. Gutters and downspouts will be present. The windows will be logic, windows and offer roll or equivalent. Architectural elements are continued from the front of the front to the side of the building. The proposed building has textures and patterns. The project is visually compatible with the surrounding buildings. And exterior treatments provide character to the project. Sensitive materials proportional architectural elements are provided by continuing around the sides of the project visible from the street. Eighteen, development site standards section seven fifty point eight are met including project site consists of one proposed building. The project site does not include any existing proposed right of way. Project's multi-family buildings is a forbidden building type in this district. A minimum of fifty feet of frontage to cover or publicly accessible street providing access to children, development is provided. Development law standards are not applicable. Site landscape is provided where the project and the plantings are arranged so as not to obscure the vision of exit traffic. Parking must be located other than five feet behind the front facade of the private building. The project does not need this requirement and the waiver is requested. A street screen is required where parking is filled with this visible from out public street or sidewalk, a landscape screen of rose shrubs is provided to partially screen parking of every way. Two driveways servicing the side are provided off countryway at an age of twenty feet wide with separation of approximately one hundred fifty feet. Two driveways are allowed for the bond project of building one and two, seven ninety nine and eight oh one, and the concrete eight oh three as the bond frontage is over fifty feet. New public utilities will be provided as underground utilities. Trash storage is internal to each unit with an outsized trash storage area provided with a dumpster inside fenced enclosure on coasts. A loading area is provided with parallel parking spaces to the rear of buildings. Bicycle racks have been provided at a minimum required rate of ten percent of the total automobile spaces. Four bicycle rack spaces are required and six spaces are being required are being provided. Nineteen, a sustainable site design is provided for the VCN district per section seven fifty one of zoning by law such as that such that stormwater management shall conform to best management practices as described for the Pumba of Massachusetts Stormwater Bill of the Handbook. The project for redevelopment methodology is maintained by the infiltrating stormwater in underground chambers. The project's post-construction stormwater heat rate and volume runoff is not exceeding the redevelopment flows of the one, two, ten, twenty five, and one one hundred year twenty four hour rain events using the tight three twenty four hour rain gap. Stormwater best management practices are required and the project needs those best practices through the use of deep stump footing catch bases and good downsides to culchet dry well chambers. The total impermease area on the side is seven thousand two hundred fifteen square feet and the total disturbance is fourteen thousand five hundred forty one square feet of of fourteen thousand five hundred twenty one square foot side. Eighty one percent TSS removal has been provided as awaited TSS removal with both properties having eighty nine percent TSS removal for thirteen thousand four hundred eighty two square feet of impermease area and forty four percent TS removal for two thousand five hundred forty four square feet of impermease area with minor modification of the design to adjust manholes to have the deep stump manhole block one. Out of the recharge has been provided. A landis twenty, a landscape plan is required for all submissions except where made by the planning board. Each plan should to the greatest extent possible utilize native plants. No plants listed as invasive or prohibited by Massachusetts shall be used and existing invasive plants shall be removed. A project landscape plan has been provided in which some native plants are closed. Moreover, the lawn area in the front yard is minimal minimized as fertilizer use is discouraged and screening of the parking area from the front has been provided with requirements met. Twenty one, front yards shall not include impermease surface except for driveway. Driveway, walkways are paved up to the dining area and shall consist of no more than twenty five percent of the front yard. Here is part of one driveway and a walkway in the front yard which the applicant indicates constitutes nine hundred eighty two square feet of impermease area over the one thousand nine hundred twenty one square foot. Front yard, thirty foot setback, thus the impermease in the front yard is fourteen point nine percent. Twenty two, parking design standards also must improve access from parking lot to a public sidewalk into the primary building as stated in section seven point eight F two. The project is provided a walkway connection from the parking area in the rear of a proposed sidewalk, the park, retreat of a proposed sidewalk in part of the building. The proposed sidewalk will extend along the flow line which has currently proposed except for the driveway which will have a crosswalk. Twenty three, section seven sixty apartment parking has been provided for the zoning by law. The applicant indicates seventy five spaces are required from ten above. The parking includes ten spaces for five two-bedroom units and two spaces per unit greater than required. Five spaces are in garages and five are in the driveways for the unit. No handicap spaces are provided. Each unit will have electric vehicle PV charging capabilities. The board has applied that for section seven fifty one three H point three that ten percent of the interior parking lot has, you know, has slash.
You guys have to make a decision here because I've been talked about this before, so you have to make a decision.
Has or has not been landscaped and that the requirement is applicable is not applicable in this case as underground range chambers are the no parking islands and plant instead of out in islands where possible.
Right, so we should talk about that now. John's latest report tells you that it does, I think, ten percent of the parking islands have been, the requirement has been met.
Well, I'm not sure it has been met, but the applicant claims it doesn't. And I, my opinion, and this is what the board needs to make a determination on, is that all of the parking constitutes parking area. Having a few here, a few there, that's pretty tough, parking areas, lot like that. Like you have parking lot and it's got spaces here and then you have, you know, there's a driveway through and you guys, it's based on the other side. It's all parking lots, we haven't got it. That's not our neighborhood. They may actually meet ten percent within the area, but they never calculated and claimed it didn't apply. So that's something that you make a determination on. I mean, I suspect that they have I mean, each, there's parking, there's a garage, there's parking, and then sort of some islands around it, it's just a question, is it ten percent? There's no calculation, I didn't try to calculate it. So that's the decision, does that apply to a place like this? There's over, you have a number of spaces.
Yes, Joseph. So if you think that it doesn't apply, then you would say it's not, it is not applicable. So we could still vote.
Michael, if it does not apply?
It does not apply, I'm still sure.
So I'm still crazy about what does it apply? Can you?
Sure, so if you have ten parking spaces, you need to have interior landscaping of whatever percent.
Ten percent.
Ten percent. So to look at it on a simple case, say you had a big parking lot, you need sort of a strip in the middle or the islands at the end to make up the ten percent of that parking lot. Here, parking is in front of the buildings and some is in the back, but the total number of spaces meets the criteria. So I looked at it as like, the site meets the criteria with the number of spaces. If you say that it doesn't apply, then somebody could have a parking lot here or eight or whatever, eight parking lot over here, they'd say, you don't have to land it. So I was assuming that you take the aggregate number of spaces and apply it that way. So that's the way that the board needs to make a decision.
And if you look at the landscape plan, there are trees in most of the islands, I mean, the trees, some of the islands. You have the pet rain structure below there too, so it's gonna be quite hard to put a tree there, but you know, um, you know.
And we're saying landscape.
Landscape that's in here but not at the ten percent.
Oh, I think Mike made it.
Nobody calculated.
Right.
We don't know.
Right, we don't know one way or another, but I'm telling you that if you look at the landscape plan, there are trees.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at.
In the islands, there are trees on the outside. You know, so it's it's likely to meet that requirement, but um, you know, we don't have that information.
So we're only still looking at the one building, right?
Right, just the one building.
I'm a school team. But if that has, there are not that's the people are. So, I mean, I just visually looking at it, kind of reading those red pictures. The interior parking lot at that landscape and as the requirement is.
Okay, I mean.
So maybe what we just need is a confirmation, so to go back, how this says.
So we wanna.
Doesn't that help? Okay, might be.
Till my my house.
Well, it only goes to here, right? Long enough to the property.
So you wanna add in a confirmation that this condition um, that this finding has been met? Shall be provided?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Shall I continue on to the brief?
Is that square footage, just square footage, is that what it's relating to? I believe what it is, is you have, just to look at it, so you have parking spaces. However many square feet, those would be internal islands. So if those make the ten percent, so I think it might make it, it's just that it was never calculated. And then that, I think you have the same sort of here.
But it is a square footage cabinet.
It's a square footage, a square footage of parking, a square footage of the whole city landscaping. And I would look at it, even though this is being broken up, I would sort of look at it as an aggregate, it's the whole thing either. But you could do it separately, I guess, no.
Mr. Brady?
Yeah.
So I'll stop, what I'll say.
Well, this only applies to eight and three, so it would only be for this one.
It can only be.
Sure, I'll say provided, required to enforcement. Yes, you.
And just to, since the plans are kind of back coming back for this, the other one, it should be on those.
Yes.
Thank you.
They should probably have that already calculated.
Yeah.
Just before October twenty.
Yes, all right, all ready?
Ready.
Twenty four, please. Situated zoning by law, section seven seventy point six sets forth a standard review for approval of proposed site plans that are required for proposed developments which are of a size that may have significant impacts on neighborhood. MFVs require a site plan reviewed by the planning board in reviewing, calculating, and then the ones required for sure to whether consistent with the reasonable use of the site purposes admitted by the regulation.
to whether we're consistent with the reasonable use of the site purposes emitted by the regulations of the district in which the land is located, all of the following. Section seven seventy point six A, a site plan approved with standard A.
Are you?
I should read the fine.
All right. The site is previously developed property of a single-family residence, a proposed development will modify the site with an allowed, let, allowed use of multi-family building in accordance with the bylaw. Northern, southern, and western boundary lines are bordered by residential, by residential areas. The eastern block line is away from commercial uses across the street. There is a stone wall and trees on the property of Lincoln Park to the west. The adjoining premises are protected from detrimental and/or offensive impacts from the development. This, the site has been designed to mitigate impacts to the building properties and does not propose any detrimental or offensive methods of use. This standard has been met. Twenty-five. Section seven seventy point six B, site plan approved with standard B. The proposed project is located on Countryway. The proposed project will have its own separate off-street parking, meeting the requirements of seven eighty and seven sixty. Access to the site will be provided from a new curb cut into the site from Countryway. Details have been provided demonstrating adequate access for emergency vehicles. A site distance detail has been provided demonstrating adequate site distance. Site is an access easement, seven ninety-nine and eight oh one Countryway for shared access. This standard is met. Twenty-six. Section seven seventy point six C, site plan approved with standard C. Finding, the proposed project is located on Countryway, a public street. The proposed project will have its own separate off-street parking, meeting the requirements of section seven fifty point eight and seven sixty. Access to the site will be provided from a new curb cut onto the Countryway. The access off Countryway is twenty feet wide. Details have been provided demonstrating adequate access emergency and maintenance vehicles. A site distance detail has been provided demonstrating adequate site distance. There is an internal site walkway to reach a proposed walkway across the front of the Countryway. A loading area is provided with a parallel parking spaces in the rear of seven ninety-nine and eight oh one Countryway to facilitate small tourney vehicles. Headlight glare should not be an issue as there are no, as there are walls, fencing and screening to the adjacent property. No light fixtures are proposed except on the building, and these will have cutoff which minimizes light glare. This standard is met. Twenty-seven. Section seven seven point sixty, site plan approved with standard D. Finding, the project proposes to use an onsite septic system designed in compliance with title five and will have an empty pipe possibly connect to sewer in the future. The project proposes an onsite water connection to Countryway which must meet DVW requirements. All units will be included immediately for water. The building will have fire sprinklers for fire protection. The existing hydrant in front of eight oh one, eight oh three will be relocated to be out of the proposed driveway and it will be replaced with a new hydrant meeting the development standards. Low testing indicated the water supply is at a volume and pressure to support the proposed building. There is a fence in the downstairs area for trash which will be empty on a weekly basis or more frequently as necessary to the rear of the building in the western corner of the medicine space. The site has shared utility, seven ninety-nine and eight oh one Countryway for utilities consisting of, but not limited to, drainage, septic, sewer, water, gas, and electric. This standard is met. Twenty-eight, section seven seven point six E, site plan approved with standard G. Finding, the proposed stormwater management system for the project consists of an underground detention system that leads to an underground infiltration system for the proposed building, parking areas, and driveway. Snow storage area is provided at the north side of the proposed parking lot. The building engaged Chesia Consulting Services LLC to evaluate the accuracy and accuracy of Ray consulting LLC's stormwater report data as well as the efficacy of the design. Chesia submitted detailed written comments to the board. In response to these comments, the applicant and Ray consulting provided responses. Responses, responses, revised reports were requested in updated site plans. After further review by Chesia, the applicant has determined, was determined to have adequately addressed the comments and recommendations, assuming the stormwater management system is built on its design and DVW approves the connection to the public drainage system. Subject to minor adjustments to the plan and calculations. The applicant has submitted a construction phase and a post-construction phase stormwater operation maintenance plan that helps ensure that the project will be managed appropriately for the entire construction period and thereafter during ongoing operations. The applicant has submitted an erosion control plan that has been reviewed by the board's peer reviewed settlement. The board deemed it necessary, deemed it acceptable, acceptable is the conditions provided. The applicant has provided a snow storage area and will be responsible to renew the storm property and dispose of it in accordance with state and local regulations. The site has a shared utility easement of seven ninety-nine and eight oh one Countryway for utilities consisting of, but not limited to, drainage, septic, sewer, water, gas, and electric. A review of the stormwater management system of the planning boards and self-engineer and their approval of this site plan eliminates requirement for separate stormwater permits under stormwater general bylaw and regulations and work that comes to the plans. Kevin, Ray DPE, has certified the drainage system, will result in post-development runoff characteristics including peak flow, full of volume of runoff and water quality of runoff. Be equal unless the redevelopment runoff characteristics. This standard has been met. Twenty-nine. Section seven seventy six point F, site plan approved with standard F. Finding, this site is not within the Water Resources Protection District. There are no trucks that will pass this material to the post to store on site and no oil storage or discharge that are expected. Standard has been met. Section thirty, section seven seven point six G, site plan approved with standard G. Finding, the proposed project disturbs the entire fourteen thousand five hundred feet of the site. The site is uninclined, so the rate changes are approved. There will be anywhere from one to four feet of drainage to extract the project as driven to provide separation to groundwater. The applicant indicates cut and fill will minimize to be standard practical. Given the topography of the site, there will need to be topsoil stripping and various structural fills will need to be brought in to accomplish the great changes. No existing vegetation is proposed to remain on the site. Construction phase, post-construction phase, test management practices will be followed to minimize soil erosion. This standard is met. Thirty-one, section seven seventy one six H, site plan approved with standard H. Finding, site dismodics is not consistent and scenic views in publicly accessible locations. North city is heavily developed area, a project comprised of this. Thirty-two, section seven seventy point six I, site plan approved with standard I. Finding, the project is one driveway off Countryway designed to achieve service of the multi-family building. It looks through eight oh one and seven ninety-nine Countryway with another access point on that property. Five surface, surface parking spaces, outside garages, and five garage spaces of the codes. Parking areas are partially screened with shrub vegetation. The dumpster is screened by fencing. J-trees meeting minimum size requirements are proposed adjacent to the park area. Fencing provided to six feet should be live screening. Exterior lighting has been arranged to be on buildings only and is not still open by the properties nearby. Minimize it, glare meeting the requirement of the bylaws. This standard is met. Thirty-three, section seven seventy point six J, site plan approved with standard J. Finding, the site itself is safe, functional, and convenient. pedestrian access, the installation of sidewalks, and ADA accessible route internal to the site. There is a sidewalk proposed along the project along Countryway. There is no complete sidewalk along the project side, side of Countryway until itself link with park driveway. One bike ride location is at the rear of the building. This standard is met. Based on these findings, the planning board finds the stormwater permit and site plan review in Village Center native hood district meets the requirements under the Village Center and Native Hood district sections five eighty, seven fifty, seven sixty, and seven seventy are happy conditions as the project will be in harmony with the general purposes of this bylaw meets the requirements of Mass General laws. Chapter forty A.
Second. You can.
We're gonna break, we're starting off our discussion. Parked spaces will be out of second.
What number?
Uh, it's twenty-three. Yeah, that was the discussion about the ten percent violence. So the way it's written under seven fifty-one three H three is, is any parking area of more than ten spaces subject required to have at least ten percent of the interior locked, landscaped, and vegetated. Um, this, this has five outdoor, five indoor on this, and I really think the intention is ten bang, you know, ten in a row. But I think that's why we were saying it doesn't apply.
Um, can I have a question about?
So what do you wanna do about that?
I think I feel our number.
Okay.
Um, the open spaces, if what does it's square feet, what appears as?
There was an extra zero, okay, what does?
I, I.
But no, I just read it.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. Is it, was the building have a generator?
Okay, so.
Say last time I heard.
What?
It wouldn't.
No, it.
All right.
All of the favors and menus, all of the, Mr. Chris is looking.
I'll go back to, yeah, I'm saying, make sure to be careful, because that. I think I have four. Should say, by Attorney General.
What, I just read it.
I have four.
I have four?
Yeah.
Oh. What, what you to?
It's by the Attorney General. Was approved by the city, now meeting by Attorney General. Under sixteen, we can, the bullet of that, uh, well, he was talking about the square footage. So that's four thousand three hundred.
Yes.
One?
Thirteen, yeah.
Three, so those are. Um, and is that the calculation that is only eight oh three?
Yes, I made, I made, I will double check, but I mean, I, I told them right from the beginning, it had applied eight oh three.
Okay. So then on twenty-three, sorry. So the question is whether this parking is applicable or not, right? And we said it was, and I guess the case is that it should only be applicable if it's outdoor parking spaces. Achieved in sense, right? I don't know about continuous outdoor parking spaces, but outdoor parking.
It should apply to outdoor parking.
Yeah.
All right, so you.
So it's not applicable, right?
So it would be not applicable.
Right. We can still put a number and then say it's twenty whatever percent, but it's not applicable.
So the parking lot has been landscaped and the apartment is not applicable.
Right. Well, that, that's, that's my reading.
And so we don't quote that. So you want a confirmation of that, Parker, who are concerned? Yes, okay.
So on twenty-five, there's an access site by this curb cut. That curb cut is mostly on eight oh three.
That's, it's mostly on, mostly on eight oh one.
Eight oh one, that's not bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that is only contained with the easement.
Yes.
Okay, so they could still build this thing in the.
Yes, 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 yes.
And then on twenty-six. So the loading area is provided in parallel of parking space, we're seven and eight.
Yeah.
Is that space part of the easement as well? So it's, if we don't build it, they're not gonna have that building.
I think it is part of the area.
Yes, okay. And then on the finding on thirty. That project disturbs fourteen thousand. Again, that's only eight oh three.
Yes, that's only eight oh three.
Yeah, that's it.
Send it to the men.
All right.
All right.
We're running a good half hour behind, so. All right, so I don't know, I don't know if, does it, way to expedite reading number one by just summarizing that it's, you know, site plans, the architectural plans, you know, we could maybe try to do that?
Yeah.
Instead of reading every.
I don't wanna read all of this.
Right, so I'm telling you, maybe.
General requirements, they should.
Did you say all, they should be done in accordance with, the plan says recorded.
Yeah. As what he just said, okay.
As stated in section one.
Right, perfect. Two, tell me when we can move along here.
Yeah.
Two, this stormwater permit and site plan review requires approval permitting or licensing from the local, state, or federal agencies such require approval permitting or licensing is to be efficient of the town of City Planning Board, or the board approved of the approval of this site plan review and stormwater permit, including but not limited to approval of the select board, the department, the works, and public rights of way. By construction shall meet all applicable federal, state, and local laws, regulations, and some regulatory guidelines, including but not limited to those of the city, the environment, public building, and public transportation board, as well as the best D P and state board. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to construction. Free, construction shall meet all the requirements of the city, the bylaw. For the applicant shall meet, shall meet any A.
Yeah.
You know, all shall mean the applicant, rather the current application and or its successors in interest. This site plan review and stormwater permit shall last within two years of issuance, which shall not improve such time required to pursue or await. The determination of an appeal under general laws, chapter thirty A, section seventeen of the grant era. A substantial use there, era must not sooner commence, except for good cause, amid the case of a special purpose of construction. If construction is not allowed by such date, except good cause. The planning board may extend said period. Good cause shown while receiving a written request from applicant prior to expiration of said period, which we was, shall provide a detailed description of the good cause. Necessary, necessary meaning. Extension to that, thank you. Extension, a public care may be required. Three, five, the total number of residential dwellings outside shall not exceed five. There will be five two-bedroom units, a total of ten bedrooms, which may not exceed. Not be, may not be exceeded. A bedroom is defined in accordance with Title V of the sanitary, state sanitary code. Massachusetts Architectural Access Board and M A A B requirements, that all units constructed at the site shall be other rental or ownership conditions. With ownership currently anticipated. A mix of the two shall not occur. Six, the applicant shall obtain the plan endorsement from the planning board for the site plan review and stormwater permit within ninety days of expiration of the field period. And this decision be come final. All conditions shall be described on the plans prior to this. Seven, storage of fertilizers and pesticides shall allow, unless they are covered or contained. Eight, no vehicle wash must to occur on the site. Nine, units in the new building shall be numbered on the outside for identification, fire protection, and emergency response purposes. Ten, gates are not allowed at the access driveway now or in the future. Eleven, the crosswalk across the new entrance shall be ten feet wide and must comply with town standards, ADA standards, and M U C, M U T C D standards. Waivers. A waiver is requested for the second, for section seven fifty point eight, one, to have parking located within five feet of the park. The board. Rans?
Rans.
Okay, rans this waiver. Thirteen, a waiver is requested from the Citu stormwater by law, section eight, A three, and stormwater. Citu stormwater regulations, section nine point three. This section of the bylaw requires the site to retain one inch of stormwater runoff for all impermeable services. The applicant has provided one inch of treatment water quality volume and does not, if does retain runoff with full compliance with state stormwater regulations. They may maintain it is not feasible to comply fully with one inch of plants specifically along the front portion of the site. They have attempted compliance by achieving elevated eighty-one percent T S S removal for a curvy areas. When thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-two square feet have a first, in purveyed area has eighty-nine percent T S S removal. And two thousand nine hundred twenty-four square feet have a first, in purveyed area with minor modifications to the design, who just a manhole. To have a deep sump manhole for off line. The board rans.
Rans, do you, do you hold that, do you hold?
Hold.
I mean, so I forgot a waiver. Oh, I, I forgot that, um, that. I suggested to them that because only unit one faces the street, units two, three, four, and five face the internal access driveway. That they should ask for a waiver because it says bylaws technically all units are supposed to face the street. I think it, it's a reasonable waiver. I, I forgot to write it. I've got it written on the other one. On, uh, on my draft for eight oh one and seven ninety-nine. I, I think it's a reasonable waiver.
Yes. All right, so wait.
Always. I'll add it in.
Add it. And it's what? Utilities, parking, traffic, and street improvements. Fourteen, maintenance repair of the driveway and parking areas, stormwater management, site utilities, snow removal, and other states shall be responsibly applied by the applicant. Fifteen, all parking is limited to designated spaces as shown on plan. Five surface parking spaces, five garage, five garage parking spaces are provided. The board has determined the spaces shown not constitute tender parking. Each unit will be equipped with electric only of charging facilities. All parking is limited to spaces shown on plan. Parking the driveways in front of the garage cannot have a vehicle that's seen seventeen feet in length, as included in the condominium trust and master team documents. Sixteen, no underground irrigation systems are allowed in the town water distribution system. Or in any manner using municipal water in accordance policy that effective by the board's selectment on October eighth, twenty fourteen, and reaffirmed. By the City Water Commissioners on May twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen. All irrigation systems installed in accordance with policy must be supplied by on-site sources of private water supplies. At the expense of the private owner. Seventeen, any underground storage unit system floor used for irrigation must be shown on plan prior to endorsement. Any change later in the project provides planning approval. Eighteen, the applicant shall allow members and town officials of the planning board and other persons acting under the authority of the planning board as its agents. Who enter upon any lands and carry out any such surveys and inspections as they deem necessary and place and maintain monuments and marks. The applicant shall cooperate with the planning board and town officials and assist them in their efforts. To verify the layout, design, and construction work in the site and their views. Plan, our staff's factory, and according to town specifications. And requirements of the home group. Nineteen, independent inspectors contracted or employed through town shall perform the required construction inspection according to section nine of subdivision regulations. And up and as otherwise.
Probably skip this. We, we're allowed to have a, um, consulting engineer.
So. Number twenty?
Yeah.
Construction of the proposed driveway, parking areas, proposed drainage system, proposed water system. Proposed super system shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer. Since supervised engineer shall certify if writing to the planning board to be good value. At completion of the proposed driveway, parking area, drainage system, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Functioning in full accordance with the group's set style.
And then as, and as felt is required at the end, it has to be, you know, sign and stamp, et cetera.
Et cetera. Okay. Twenty-one, all materials for utility construction shall be D P W construction standards. Twenty-two, a street opening permit shall be obtained for each individual utility connection with feet and lawn required for determining application. Twenty-three, expendable. Global fill shall be required for any excavation of the way, gas water connections, and around any drainage structure replaced in concrete wedge, right of way. Thank you. A curb cut permit, this is twenty-four, curb cut permit shall be obtained from D P W prior to preconstruction conference. Twenty-five. ADA compliant ramps shall be constructed to cover the way that proposed driveway. Said ramps shall meet town standards and begin compliance with town situated, et cetera, et cetera. Flush grid permit shall be used bottom of the ramps where they need the two minutes. Twenty-six, applicant, the applicant shall obtain unnecessary approvals for the use of town water prior to scheduling with pre-conference, pre-construction conference, and any construction, that's it. Uh, any requirements required upgrades, modifications, and connections shall be at the owner's expense. Installation of all water mains and frequencies shall be performed according to specifications of the D P W water division. Pockets of dollars, so pre-approvals shall be furnished to the town planner by the applicant. Each unit to be mediated separately with connection and moving fees required. Twenty-seven, a determination of adequacy of the existing water service by global purpose use, proposed use shall be provided by the applicant to be going with the town planner for their approval. Prior to scheduling, pre-construction conference. Twenty-eight, a dry soot connection pipe shall be installed on site in event sewer is available. And that's it, also aligned with the above. Twenty-nine, the building, parking, walkways, and required signage shall be all according to the requirements of ADA and A A B and. Citu commission on facilities in Florida. Third, they have control of jewelry with signs, landscaping, other features located in the site trying of, of the project, site driveways, and intersection of the way are designed and installed and maintained. So it's not to be peed lines from site, not to exceed two oh five feet in height. Thirty-one, all signs and pavement markings shall be installed and performed to the applicable specifications of the manual on municipal traffic control devices. All pavement. All pavement markings in the colored way shall be thermoplastic. The entrance crosswalk should be painted with thermoplastic paint. Thirty-two, the applicant shall ensure that snow window, windy rose located in the site triangle areas of the project, site driveway, intersection of the way that exceed twenty-one point five feet in height. While that are turned. More like R B in height, although otherwise in the set lines are properly. Thirty-three, a snow storage area has been designated on site. That, you know, the de-icing standing age, it's been only be stored on site if they are covered or contained. Here in fortress, fresh management will be handed from residents, disposable, et cetera, and there's a dust fence dumpster. Thirty-five, all electrical telephone cable that's in utilities should be located around. Thirty-six, for exception time, along segments of the sewer and water line from the property line outward, all utilities include the round room and two. Um, is to be maintained by the.
Yeah.
The applicant, right. Thirty-seven, if the drainage system is not forming as designed or conditioned on stormwater reserve going to a button property, so it will streak. Stormwater authority can require all necessary information to permanently cover the situation. This condition applies to all construction activities and certain vibes, the issuance of certificate of completion to apply during all ongoing operations of building cycle. Thirty-eight, no separate wall stormwater permit is required as long as the site is built to be pro-planned at stormwater preparation. This approval and condition is prompt to the stormwater permit. Thirty-nine. Inspection of all infiltrations, infiltration systems must be performed by the planning boards itself from engineer and design engineer. Pride and backfill are system component installation to confirm suitability of source. Forty, soil conditions at the bottom of the proposed infiltration area shall be inspected by the town consultant engineer prior to infiltration devices being installed at that. Forty-one, the project is supposed to discharge a stormwater development, they runoff onto the existing stormwater system in countryway in front of building two, eight oh one. All connections to the existing stormwater system must be combined and called connection. Any and all work, all the petri way should have a one year warranty, one settlement. And for pavement restoration. Forty-two, all work will be needed in the colored way, showing the coordinate, the dummy coordinate. This is how it's private. To be called, private for the work is formed. This includes any excavation, curving sidewalk construction, and backfilling of the way. Twenty-three, the hydrology. Hydrology model shall give you guys to correct the pipe length for the subsurface detention system. Three, to match plans of four-inch orifice and rise could be installed with a larger discharge pipe without the path for rates. Forty-four, the arrangement of the deep sump manhole bypass manholes and oil grid separately should be revised to make deep sump manholes only receive flow from the trench trains to meet T S S requirements. Erosion control facing. Forty-one, forty-five, an erosion control plan with separate. With a sequence of construction has been provided prior to application of the building permit at the, at the pre-construction conference. A detailed sequence of construction shall be provided, including access parking and fencing provisions, and a detailed. Sequence of erosion incentive patrol, de-watering methodology, so all de-watering stays on site throughout construction of the project was. A SWIP, as is the done introduction with seven ninety-nine in eighty months delay, and the project should not commence prior to review and approval of SWIP by the town prior to filing. Yet, forty-six, drop piles shall be located and must be protected with erosion controls, including but not limited to simple socks and temporary feeding. Forty-seven, now shall be. Full undefeated access for fire truck and animals during construction. Twenty-eight, construction phase operation maintenance plan, best management practices shall be adhered to and added to the plans prior to this. Environmental conditions, noise, and dust. Forty-nine, site noise levels shall inform to the master to be distributed and air quality for noise pollution. A baseline condition shall be taken and submitted to the town there prior to commencement of any construction activities. Fifty, the applicant shall know all regulations under the master target, environmental protection, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. For C M R, several, dust, dust, keep dust down. Fifty-one, the applicant shall not operate any concrete crushing machine on the project site. Fifty-two, a dust control plan must be provided to the planning board to review and prior and approve. Prior to the pre-construction conference. Landscaping, site amenities, and public well improvements, fifty-two. All changes to proposed plans must be presented to the planet, town planner for approval. Town planner or the planning board inspector currently guarded to approve minor changes, modifications, from the approval of proof plans and or any details needing providing, et cetera, et cetera. All changes shall be approved by the planning board, material selection shall be provided to the town planner. Uh, at, at a meeting with D R C. Fifty-four, a separate sign permit should be required for the building department for any free standing signs unless otherwise accepted under the zone bylaws. Blah, 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 blah. Fifty-five, oh my god. All proposed lots and square areas shall have a minimum of six inches of clean screen lawn. Improves shall be provided. Sixty-six, calculations for gutter capacity now.
You want to like do it just for interest?
Fifty-shoes. I'll give you. There should be no white spillage over any of the properties. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Fifty-seven, all walls of the four feet must be decided by the structural engineer and building code. Eighty-three trees shall be a minimum of three inch caliber and to high with branch and higher type of above six feet. Fifty-nine, the existing lawn script from the project shall not be spread back on the site if it contains invasive seeds. Sixty, up to six additional empty truss, a three to four be shown by the headline layer provides. Proves to be an issue coming up the driveways. Sixty-one, the applicant shall construct a sidewalk in the town right of way, countryway to town standards. Uh, the sidewalk shall extend along the entire bunch of the property except where there is a driveway that should have to be five point five feet wide. In the inclined concrete block with word confirming. Et cetera, et cetera, sidewalk must be constructed to D P W engineering standards, et cetera, et cetera. Architecture designs. Two, the building shall be constructed in accordance with architectural. Elevations and plans submitted to the planning board to, to the project. Um, sixty-three, the final building plans stand by goods to architecture provided to the planning board prior to building permit. And run this to spread the condition one. If the plans differ from approved plans, equipment changed by the planning board will be required. Sixty-four, what would have lasted quite the meaning size? They face the street. The way, survive any privacy, first, it's quite six feet tall. Sixty-six, calculations for gutter capacity. Um, interior with drains. Shall be submitted and approved. Prior to the conditions of building permit. Sixty-seven, certification shall be provided to the town planner by the architect prior to obtaining a specific certificate of occupancy that the building as constructed using substantial compliance with the plans. This requirement is in addition to what is required for the building product. Required prior to scheduling with pre-conference, pre-construction conference. Sixty-eight, all units, condominium units, the condominium trust and master team shall. Sixty-eight, all units, our condominium units, the crown, the condominium trust and master D shall provide. Do a blah, blah, blah. Do a blah, 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 blah. Sixty-nine, prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, the applicant shall provide to the planning board, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Same as our, same as all this.
I said, I do want to point out that I extracted surety yesterday. There's just really surety I was probably.
Required prior to start construction, which can't be described to be up. So patience and ten planer in terms of any work on the project site, the construction shall be held applicant and the representatives. So right. God's love them. Seventy-one, the property lines of the subject property shall be marked with clay. The property line should be stapled at all times during construction. Seventy-two, the stabilization, construction entrance and silvemounts saw shall be installed prior to any work completed. Construction penalty shall be required as necessary. Seventy-three, the utility and access spaces must be important prior to construction required during construction. Seventy-four, construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM, the usual, usual, what you have to do. Seventy-five, the board research request required consultant engineer who isn't the site weekly or is not as necessary. Seventy-six, all work movement disturbance operations shall only occur off erosion and sanitation controls. Iron place improved by the town planner, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Seventy-seven, construction activities on the site should be informed to the town situation bylaws. Seventy-eight, no cement, cement water shall be allowed to be sight during construction. Seventy-nine, no parking or unloaded, a countryway shall be permitted. Construction of vehicles shall use the designated construction site. Eighty, all construction parking shall be onsite unless otherwise prepared by the planning board. Eighty-one, applicant should know that God will send to a police department. Forty-eight hours in advance, any significant equipment and construction material arriving at the site and the deep, any please detail is required at the expense of the applicant. The applicant should not allow any large construction equipment on purpose to stage our idle couple of roads and shall not allow such equipment on trucks to arrive onsite prior to seven AM, et cetera, et cetera. Police details may be required. Eighty-three, the applicant shall provide the town with the routes of construction. Um, you know, no, go around these little itty-bitty roads. Eighty-four, construction activity shall be conducted in a workman-like manner and otherwise every company uses themselves and no blowing dust. Eighty-five, no use of hydrants onsite or adjacent roads offsite for construction, a hydrant is available. Thank you. Eighty-six, in effort to reduce noise levels, the applicant should be all equipment out to car. Eighty-seven, blasting if necessary shall be conducted according to all necessary permits, meeting all consequences by department. Didn't we say we wouldn't be any? Eighty-eight, snow cannot be stored on subsurface stormwater bleaching areas. This condition survives with the foodie. Eighty-nine, no de-watering, water shall be decided, shall be fully onsite. Required prior to issues of occupancy permits, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the planning board, the building commissioner has satisfied with everything. Where are we? Ninety-one. Ninety-one. Prior to application of our certificate of occupancy, copy of the contract, inspections and maintenance of the sewer block system for a whatever plan shall be provided for the office. Ninety-two, the applicant has provided the planning board with condominium trust documents, uh, master D, all were necessary, getting work is necessary, leaving all all of those. Administration, ninety-three, all time periods referenced in this document with completion of conditions shall be told in case any appeals are taken. Ninety-four, the site plan, every human store owner shall run with the land and shall be boarded if it is not required. Reported with the British deed as the story goes. Ninety-five, the planning board may at its discretion notify the owner of the way or more type edition, modify conditions of the site plan at a duly called meeting of the board, if the board determines such a way of a modification is insignificant. Down the sixth is second plan review, which shall not occur until that's within two years of the date of issuance according to master laws. Ninety-seven, all plan sheets and the site plan review of stormwater permit shall be reported with the British deeds. Ninety-eight, all construction works should be done in accordance with plans. None, none, any condition contained here in the various home of the super sir who proceeds the plan, they had different, oh my god, good job.
Yeah, we have a lot more.
Oh. All right, you read that, you're rolling.
If seven ninety-nine, eight oh one countryway are not approved, the applicant must be back to the planning board prior to obtain a building permit for a site planner due modification hearing.
Is it the second? Seven, or seven? Steve.
Um, forty-four, we used to learn, good. Oh, yes. Should.
Well, that's.
Or if it's a rise or should. They have to run the counts. Maybe why? They have to run the counts. In order to do this.
So. They sent me the program. I saw that was the incorrect link of the pipe when I ran it with the correct link of the pipe, it created a problem. And I said, what could we fix? It's not my job and I don't think it's possible. They decided they have to do it on their plan and change it. So the reason I said it could be done is they could do something different that works as well. I'm not saying this is how you have to do it, I'm just offered an option. That's why it says, there's a question answer.
About four inch worth of insulation, I just can't. Shall be installed almost. Or I'm not very approved, that. Sure. We learned, you know, something that basically said, okay, do this, or if you come back to something else.
Right, exactly.
Anybody else? No. It's James.
No. The elements work for sure. Say that.
Yeah, that's right.
And you get to do it again?
Sound. Second is a bit. All familiar.
Aye.
Uh, all right, so now you have to read this other motion. I'm sorry, I forgot to make.
Sorry, we had a great day.
So now we are. Okay, I will accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for a main design plan administrative review of stormwater permit for two multi-family buildings in village center and eight point district, most of the two village districts. Um. Other village subjects, BC, M, NS, V, O, B until this is eight oh one and seven ninety-nine countryway until October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five and seven thirty PM, and continuing the town for action, the town for until November sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Aye.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna do this all again. Uh, no, we're not.
Can we just say what we said before?
Yeah, you try running though, when you know you have to put different conditions for the other one. No, because it's like the other one is the affordable unit.
Whoa, okay. Okay, okay, now.
Last one.
Here.
And last second, Mr. Brady.
I am, you're good.
I'm sorry, we are a little forty minutes behind seven, we got stormwater regulation workshop. Thank you.
Can I go read something?
No, it's not a public hearing. This is just a workshop. The public hearing will be next month.
Okay.
So we got a workshop. I can't, that can't be true. I took you down with some like.
No, you're up.
Absolutely. While you're talking about we get paid for being a guest.
I'll let him read it.
We'll put it on the thing.
Thanks to the typer.
So we need it, how are we doing?
Hey, how are you doing?
Oh, wait, great. Just tell us who you are, what you need to tell us about.
So.
Great, uh, yeah, just make the chart slides.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. So, first.
I'm Michelle Wax from the Senior Water Resources here at, I'm working at the town for many years on MS four permit compliance.
And I'm Nick Coven. I'm a senior ground planer, also a forebund and have been working with Michelle on situational MS four compliance as well, actually since I started.
So start with the basic and that's four.
Yeah, we're gonna go through that right now. Um, and if I, do I just say next slide?
Oh, okay.
No, but you've got your paper copy, right? So could you just send it to me, page in my seat, turn page.
Perfect, all right. Great, thanks. So as requested, uh, we'll go through some background of stormwater and the MS four permit to just make sure everyone's coming up with the same baseline foundation of set of information. We'll go through specifically what the MS four permit requires in terms of uh, required bylaws and required regulatory language. Then we'll talk about situational specific conditions, a specific case with the existing stormwater bylaw regulations. And then get into next steps and have discussions, just make the purpose of the workshop format on the draft updated regulations. Uh, so just to get into the background here, uh, important to note, we're talking about stormwater tonight, which is differentiated from wastewater. Stormwater is water or drainage that flows for parking lots, roads, houses, any land surface. And generally flows untreated to pipes and the drainage network and then to the nearest water body, which could be Citro Park or North River, uh, Creek or Rock near your house, any water body. Uh, and different from wastewater, stormwater is not treated, so it doesn't go to your subject system or a wastewater treatment plant. It generally goes untreated to that water body. Uh, here in Massachusetts, there and across the country, there is the Federal Clean Water Act which regulates stormwater if it is in a publicly owned drainage system. And that's the MS four permit. It stands for municipal, separate, storm sewer system permit. I'll probably say MS four. Thank you for counting this, did I get them all?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, so municipalities are required to have that permit if they own and operate a public drainage system of their experience. Uh, the MS four permit has four minimum control measures. Often engineers just say MCM, which I always try to avoid because nobody knows what that means. Nobody really knows what minimum control measure means either. It's generally, you can just think of it as categories, no requirements in the MS four permit, and those are all listed here on the slide. So there's public education requirements, there's public involvement requirements. There's illicit discharge detection and elimination requirements, which is basically just trying to keep things out of the stormwater system that shouldn't be in the stormwater system. There's construction sites stormwater management, post-construction stormwater management, and then good housekeeping and pollution prevention. So these are the different categories of requirements, the MS four permit. Uh, tonight we'll be drilling down into, uh, one aspect of MCMs four and five, but, um, before I get into that, also important to note that on top of these categories of requirements, there's also requirements for impaired waters. So if the drainage system drains to an impaired water body or a water body with water quality issues, there's another way you can think of it, uh, there's additional requirements that are kind of relevant on top of the six basic categories of requirements in the MS four. Um, actually, sorry, can you just switch back in a second? Um, and I like to think of these six categories as kind of making sure that each sector is doing its fair share to try to deal with stormwater pollution. So you might notice the first two MCMs refer to public, public. Uh, then there's good housekeeping, which is generally kind of municipal operations and activities like street sweeping to try to make sure that municipalities living its fair share. And then when you get to, uh, post-construction stormwater management, construction sites stormwater management, that's really about private sites and their potential contributions to the public stormwater system. So trying to ensure that activities on development sites, construction sites are not adversely contributing stormwater pollution to the public stormwater, uh, system or the drainage system.
And so are we just doing five and six?
Uh, so for tonight, we're talking specifically about one aspect of, uh, minimum control measures, five, uh, four and five.
Oh, got it. Yeah, box stuff.
Uh, that's five and six. Sorry, that's okay. Um, no, tonight, four and five.
Four and five.
Yep, but situational is certainly doing, uh, MS four related activities for all states. It's just tonight's workshop and the bylaw and regulations are, uh, under the umbrella of MS four. All right, so one aspect of, uh, the new control measure four and five for construction site and post-construction sites for water management is to have a regulatory mechanism or a bylaw that, uh, addresses specific elements of construction sites and post-constructions for water management. Uh, most municipalities address these requirements with a single stormwater bylaw or city stormwater ordinance. Uh, but it is important to keep in mind, kind of talking about two separate sets of requirements, construction sites and post-construction sites that typically address one set of requirements at a municipal level. Uh, and also just as additional context, most municipalities like here in situat have a bylaw which lays out the general requirements and then regulations and provide the, the details to implement those requirements in the bylaw. That's generally how a situational system works as many municipalities. The bylaw has to have, based on the MS four permit requirements, uh, it has to be applicable to all land disturbances of one acre or more. So that means that the bylaw and its regulations need to regulate land disturbances of one acre or more. Municipalities can make that more stringent, they can regulate, uh, smaller disturbances or particular types of disturbances. But as far as the MS four permit is required, the bylaw needs to at least address disturbances of one acre or more. Uh, and situational, as, as you all may know, has some more specific, um, thresholds that we'll get into in just a minute, uh, that are, uh, in some cases more stringent than that one acre threshold. One acre threshold needs to be kind of overarching. On the construction side of things, uh, there are requirements for language that address, uh, construction waste and debris, erosion sediment control, I think, or heard in the hearing that was happening just a few minutes ago. Uh, and also in these have enforcement mechanism, among other, uh, ways to control or regulate, uh, construction sites and their, their stormwater. On the post-construction side of things, there are, uh, performance standards that need to be in the municipal, uh, bylaw. There are onsite stormwater management features that need to be in the bylaw that need to be required for developments. Uh, operations and maintenance plan, uh, submission of ASBILs and other details like low impact development needs to be written into the bylaw as a, uh, baseline to be done for development, uh, in less confusing. And all these requirements are, again, if the disturbance is one acre or more, at the minimum municipalities will make that a lower threshold they choose to.
So the post-construction site is that intended to address the site in perpetuity?
Yep, yes. So this is trying to kind of address, uh, two sides of the stormwater coin, if you will. Activities during construction, making sure sediment from a construction site, for example, is kind of running off into the catch basin, and then the long-term performance of the site after construction is done.
This would only catch anything that's covered by this MS four permit that had disturbed an acre or more.
Yeah, yes.
So, so everything else in town is not governed by that.
Right.
Only if there was construction.
Only if there's that one acre versus, and that's exactly why some municipalities choose to have a different, uh, threshold because they want to, uh, address the development that's most likely to occur, or they want to be more protective of quality or whatever political, uh, interests they're trying to secure. And just to, to put a finer point on that, um, the MS four permit is at a kind of municipal level, so municipality is the holder for the permittee. And then the municipality needs to have that language in their bylaw and regulations that then governs development in that. So there's kind of multiple steps, regulatory, oversight, reflection.
And then is the permit effective, like down situ?
Yeah, so the current permit, uh, is dated twenty sixteen. It went into effect, uh, twenty eighteen. Uh, and there is a current draft permit on the books, but until that permit is, uh, fully implemented, the previous permit continues administratively, so, uh, the twenty sixteen permit is still in effect until the new permit is. and so the new permit is fully on the books, um, which is still draftable. Maybe more information that you maybe wanted to know, but it's, it's complicated in this case because we have a draft permit that isn't fully implemented. Any other questions?
All right.
Yeah.
Uh, so this is getting at some of what, uh, folks were just asking about, so in Situate's case, um, there is an existing stormwater bylaw and associated stormwater regulations that meet many of the requirements that we just went through, um, but not necessarily all. So because of that, EPA is requiring Situate to update the regulatory language by the end of this calendar year. In particular, um, Situate's language doesn't have the required water quality standards, uh, it doesn't have some of the requirements specifically for the impaired water bodies that exist here in Situate that are, uh, like I mentioned, if you guys have an umbrella or additional requirements on top of those six minimum control measure categories. Uh, there in our, are many thresholds in Situate's language, uh, that in some cases are actually more stringent than the one acre threshold, but there is not an overarching one acre threshold, and so there's the potential that some projects could slip through the cracks that are disturbing more than an acre because of how the word language is written, uh, although it is more stringent than that one acre in some cases, it's a little bit of a maze of threshold that makes it work. Uh, and then there are some details for both post-construction and construction sites stormwater management that are also not in, uh, existing language. Um, with these updates, there's also opportunities to appropriate other best practices that can be done if you're going to open up, uh, a set of regulations or a bylaw, uh, some opportunity to kind of incorporate, clean up or other best practices. Uh, so getting into next steps, uh, we at Corsey Wing Group have worked with town staff and other stakeholders to develop draft updated regulations to address some of those missing components, uh, some other best practices that we've seen, uh, that I think were shared with planning board, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, planning board is.
Yeah, okay, great.
The draft is online.
Great. Uh, and so this is, this forum is certainly an opportunity for planning board input, public input on the draft regulations, um, I think Mayor was just mentioning a public hearing for next month, uh, but this is, I think, the primary forum for the discussion of, uh, what's in the draft updated regs and any input by the board. Uh, and then just to kind of keep on everybody's radar, um, the, any edits in the regulations would potentially affect the bylaw and maybe the bylaw would need to be updated to make sure it's consistent with the regulations. Um, a natural question might be, well, why are we talking about the bylaw right now? Why are we talking about regulations? Uh, the reason for that is because it is, um, most likely the most efficient and quickest way to get Situate back into compliance with the here requirements to address the regulations, make sure all the updates are applied for the MS4 permit, and then on the backend, update the bylaw as needed for anything that has changed regulations.
So we got, uh, compliance with that.
Correct.
Okay. That's good.
So, since we're out of compliance and they haven't said anything about fines, but fines could be subjected to the town, and there has to be some action by the end of the year, we started with the regulations. The intent is for us to try to get a bylaw or revise the bylaw for the spring town meeting. So that's a, it's a general bylaw, so I'll have to go through the bylaw review committee.
Is this being driven by, I think it's sent out? Is that what we're under?
Yeah, you got it. I mean, we, I sent you some, yeah, we're, we're, the EPA has sent the town a letter that we're not in compliance.
Then, of line, what was this? And most.
I thought I sent that to us. Maybe I did. Um, the letter? The letter.
Remember, standing in the dead of the night inside.
Yeah, we have, we have a letter from Region One. We have, we have our EPA, and, you know, it is, um, so I can resend this to everybody, but it basically says, you know, uh, we're out of compliance, um, and, um, you know, we need to, we need to act by December 30th, first 2025, just as the slideshow points out.
Good. It's not an official consent, you know, it's just that it's a, it's a, it's a notice.
It's in order for compliance. In order for compliance.
They rest.
Okay. So Shaw has been working with, um, Corsey Wing for several years for MS4 compliance, so what we, what we did is we, we said, what, what's the MS4 stuff that has to be put in here? And we put that into the regulations. And then, because we're going to have public hearings, we have other issues that are wrong with the regulations too, that we're having problems with, so we said, why not try to do it all at once? We had been waiting for DEP to enact their stuff, but DEP is slower than coal molasses, but we have a consent, we have an order for compliance, so we have to do something with the regulations. So why not try to get the changes that will help the town, Situate now? That, that was the whole logic.
Okay. Here we go.
So, there are a number of definitions that needed to be added to, to comply with MS4, and there are some definition changes that the town, the town would like.
Is there a way for us, Karen, to differentiate between which all those?
Everything's, everything that's changing is in red. I think.
But do you all know whether it's?
Well, I can try to go through that. I can try to go through that.
Or maybe just lack of.
Yeah, and then.
A deficiency.
All right, so design storm. We put in, um, we put in the requirement to use NOAA Atlas 14.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that's a town thing.
Good.
That's not in the EPA stuff. Um.
Can I add to that here?
Yeah, she can.
Uh, the, the design storm with the NOAA Atlas 14 plus while is a town thing that will be in the state stormwater, uh, handbook, which is still in draft form, but that, that is in the draft handbook, so we're trying.
This incorporates that stuff?
We want eventually to be consistent, we can't be consistent with the state handbook right now because it's not final, and we, so we need, but we do need to be consistent with the permit, but this will be in, yes, it's better on permit use.
Jesus. Oh, okay, that's not many, oh, that's just one.
All right, so that's, that's one of the things that, um, the town. And, um, impervious surface. As you know, we have that, that is a big problem, and so we try to clarify that, and so the big, the big change there is that we're saying permeable pavers are to be considered impervious because DEP considers them a BMP.
You said it meant permeable.
Permeable pavers are to be considered impervious. Because. Because, well, because DEP considers them a best management practice. So that's what we've drafted in here right now.
Does that mean, when you say DEP considers it a BMP, that it mean?
It means you haven't, you're trying to reduce your, um, and your impervious coverage of the site. So what can you do to do that, where you could use permeable pavers as part of your solution? So therefore, it's a best end in practice to try to, you know, make sure that more water infiltrates into the soil.
So they're not impervious, but they, for the purposes of thresholds for a project, they need to be considered so that they can be reviewed and determined if they are designed correctly. Because they aren't actually permeable unless you review it and see that they, that they are. And so if it just says it's permeable and you remove it from your impervious cover, then you might be missing projects, uh, that actually will happen in there. So it's not that they're magically not impervious anymore, but that need to be counted for that, uh, for that threshold. That makes sense.
So they're not impervious until designated, so.
Until proven, so.
So they have to so much space and time and have so much crush so bad that I'd be.
Yes.
God, do this. So, okay, thank you.
But so on, on projects that we proceed right now, people, you know, if they're saying we are under the threshold, you know, we, they, we ask them to provide a detail, provide a detail on your building permit plan to show that it's per, you know, that it's permeable, you know, you know, with the joints and all your stone and your layers of stone underneath. And so that's, that's what we've been doing so far.
I think it's really the last sentence of the proposed definitions. That the permeable component can then be considered as a BMP, so it's, it's kind of separating the two, but that gives you the opportunity to assess permit for purposes.
I think the other definitions are mostly per what MS4 requirements wanted, um, you know, we have, we have, um, you know, figured a little bit with development, new development to redevelopment to try to make it more likely, um, MS4, okay, you want to, but they want us to redevelopment, yeah, we're going to bring, we're going to have a speeches. But we were, but we tried to make it so it more resembles, um, what MS4 was. But, so most of the other definitions we have to have in there per, per the, you know, EPA requirements.
And in some cases, those definitions are terms that are later referenced to EPA required language. Just for example, the, the stormwater performance standards that I was speaking about earlier reference total loss versus total suspended solvents, so the MS4 permit, I don't think actually says you have to define those terms, but if you're going to use them, you do have to use those term performance standards, so it makes sense to have a definition for them, so that we all know what those impacts would be by the time we get to the cost there.
Karen, how come butt legged projects in the Water Resource Protection District?
How do you know that?
Um. Need projects in Water Resource Protection District? Why have you got to go to that alone?
I don't, um, she, well, we have, in the, in the regulations now, we are in the city, have done 90% TSS for the Water Resource Protection District. Now, basically, 90% is still be for everything.
That's fine.
So then, in section three, we tried to clean up some of the language, you know, the way Situate chose to do the stormwater bylaw is to have the, the stormwater authorities defined between planning board, between tapland and conservation. You know, if it's mostly outland, planning gets it, if it's under, if it's, if it's, you need to know some intent, it's supposed to be conservation, that's always worth that, right? But that was the intent, he tried to simplify the process. So we tried to clean up some language in authority.
That, how's the work, can we take it there?
No, I mean, it, it generally works.
Okay.
I mean, it, it generally works. Um. So, Town Council also has reviewed this, um, and it's okay with where we are right now, but does acknowledge that we should be making changes to the bylaw at the spring town meeting. So, under applicability, we had to add, we had to add stuff to make it clear that, you know, it applies to over 40,000 square feet, even though we say 15,000 square feet. Um, we have people who don't understand how to calculate a net increase in an impervious area, so we had to spell that out. That's under 4.1, um, you know, some of it, some of the language was done to correct, you know, repetitive things. Um, and so, you know, that's, that's what's for the, um, we added a section in these, these regulations for 80% thresholds. We have a lot of projects coming in that are, they might disturb 23.99, you know, percent of the site, or, or, you know, the impervious is right below the threshold, and, you know, several of these projects, you go out and you look at them and they, they're exceeding. And so this is basically, put your money where your mouth is, and, you know, abide by it. You know, if you say you're going to be, then it says, basically, we want a stake-in plan so that you don't exceed the limits of work. And I will tell you, several projects I know of have exceeded the work, and they should have had stormwater. And we're just asking, you know, we want, we want information. You know, you say it's, you know, you say the disturbance is, you know, less than the required, well, prove it. You say the impervious area is less, well, give us, give us all the information.
Is there, are you addressing, and then if, you know, if they're working under that threshold, can they add anything else to property?
Can they add?
Can they add anything else that is now?
Well, that would, then they might need to commit later again another permit. I mean, this, so if somebody gets a, doesn't get a permit now because they're under this threshold.
And there's a generator that goes in, and there's something out here to.
Well, theoretically, they should be coming back for a stormwater permit. It all adds up, the impervious area. Um, so we clarified about projects in the Water Resource Protection District. We clarified some stuff in the application form, um, to, to try to correspond to what the EPA wants. We tried to make it a little bit clearer, tell you most of this information, we're getting all right now. Um, so we have to have things like illicit discharge statements, we get them, we require them now, but if it wasn't, if, if clear enough, then we tried to clarify. Um, you know, erosion control plans can be standby erosion control professional, uh, so we tried to put that information in here. We have O and M plan stuff in here for during construction and after construction, we're getting that now anyways, but we have to, you know, we have to clarify stuff in here. You know, we have, we have to put the low impact development, um, stuff in there. Um, and then the big thing is on the water quality BMPs on the section nine four, we have to add the requirements that the EPA wants us to get have in here. So ultimately, we're going to have to change the form a little bit to, you know, to say how we comply with this, and, um, and we have to put information about what watershed we're in, et cetera, for, for impaired watersheds. Um, and then we clarified some stuff on inspections, and we added stuff for certificate of, um, of completion. Now, some of this stuff had been discussed prior to prior to COVID. We were having stormwater working groups and then, you know, we kind of stopped and D P had stalled. So we, I tried to include some of the stuff from there in this revision. I know it's not all, I I know the developers think it's too much, but, you know, we have problems. So if you want to talk specifically about what we had to do for the phosphorus and that kind of stuff and how it's generally achievable if you're doing infiltration. So it's, most of these people could probably need it right now.
I'll leave off phosphorus.
Yeah, well, so most of that is really in section nine, eight, uh, fourteen, uh, fifteen.
Three point four.
Yeah, nine point four. Nine point four, sorry. And so, yeah, the the language that's in I in four is what is, uh, something that comes from the MS four permit. So the MS four permit requires, what I did referring to performance standards for new development and redevelopment. What we see here with the ninety percent of the annual, uh, average annual total suspended solids, excuse me, and sixty percent of the average annual total phosphorus load, that is the requirement for new development. And in situat's case, uh, what this language reflects is the same requirement for new development as redevelopment to make things streamlined and simple. That's a higher standard than the MS four require, uh, MS four permit requires for redevelopment. This language makes it streamlined so that that higher standard applies to both new development and redevelopment. Does that make sense? I know it's confusing between new development and redevelopment, but that's, that's the intention here is to just make that one standard for both redevelopment.
How do you test your phosphorus?
I'll defer to
Yeah.
the engineer on the specifics because my knowledge will be much similar to Michelle's.
So luckily, we've had many decades now of testing of these different practices and it is an assumed removal. So if you design a practice, uh, like a bio retention or an infiltration practice to the design standards, then it is assumed it will meet a certain percent removal. And in the MS four permit, there are these performance curves that say if you can capture the full inch and you're using an infiltration trench, you basically remove ninety nine percent of phosphorus and you will meet that requirement. So you don't have to test it. That would be a huge burden if everyone had to to test that. But this is the way that performance criteria for stormwater B M Ps is is done pretty much.
Somebody tested all this.
Yes.
Those standards.
Yes.
You can think of it like the nutritional label on food. If you eat a granola or you don't test the calories in granola, but you look on the label and it says high in calories. Somebody just, I don't know if that matches the engineering technical, but that's, that's how I think.
Yeah, that's so good. I think the other additions that we made to that section based on the MS four permit, just to refer to some of the other impaired waters that we have in situat, more than phosphorus. We have some impairments for solids and I think some nitrogen impairments as well. So just some language to to cover that further down in section five there. So that's another requirement of that MS four.
Well, sure, the impaired water fact should identify.
The impaired waters are identified every two years by the state. So you don't want to put them in regulations, they need to be checked. Right now, in fact, I think the map only shows us the twenty twenty two impaired waters. So they're a little behind, I think they're going to be merging the twenty four and twenty six cycles together. So anyhow, there it is available, yes.
With publication.
Yes.
Yeah, and when we just, when municipalities develop these types of documents, they typically refer to that publication to determine which may be applicable to the regulation. Maybe applicable in their case, they capture that if the regulations, like Michelle said, it's generally written in a way so that if impairment changes, it's not stuck in the regulations or municipalities get edited, the regulations are not current stream. Quite okay, you have to do this.
We can be hopeful that some of our impaired waters will actually get cleaned up and de-listed as well. Often it goes the other way and there are additional water resources added to the list. But it it does, I've seen it, there can be de-listed water bodies that the impaired waters requirements will clarify. But the base requirement in nine four will always apply. That is for regardless where it disturbs. The ninety percent removal of class of TSS, seventy percent phosphorus.
Do you mean impaired water body, water body around here?
Yes, I think there are a long list, unfortunately, but open bucket. A squash fit.
Situat Harbor.
Situat Harbor.
North River.
North River.
They always come up with Gulf River.
Yeah.
They all run into each other. So everything that we have is impaired.
Not everything, pretty close.
North River.
Most of the main water bodies are impaired, unfortunately, at Gulf River.
Yeah, because we, because we fly so. Yeah, because actually on the fallen street, it goes all the way down and out to the power. I love seeing all the white foam, which is pollution. Is that, is that pollution, that white foam? Suns.
Can be, there can be a natural source of sun, I don't know the specific piece.
Danger to your.
Oh, it's pollution.
Cool beans.
I would say it would probably be hard to find a municipality in eastern Massachusetts that doesn't have, if not many of its water bodies. Septic systems to where they cover.
Which is why we're here at this, uh, the MS four permit. They first started with the Clean Water Act regulating the really large cities only. Uh, and then and that did a, you know, did a lot of good. And then they saw that they were still seeing a lot of pollution in our water bodies. And so they had to keep kind of going to the smaller, smaller municipalities. And so that's why now all these scores are pulled in to try to make a difference on our water resources.
Right, this is a lot of work, it's a lot to do. I just don't understand why the state can't finish whatever they're working on. I mean, it just, it's ridiculous.
Well, I think some of it has to do with, you know, they're trying to, our stormwater does not have standards for coastal storm flowage. The state does not have standards for coastal storm flowage either. And that's, that's a big, that's a big thing, that's a big contention here. And so I think it's taking long, that's one of the reasons why it's taking so long. We don't, I mean, we'll ultimately, we'll have to adopt standards for coastal storm flowage, but if the state doesn't have any standards, we can't, we can't make statements.
Well, ten point state.
It's, that's not.
Well, we kind of want to share with her.
All right, so I hope there somewhere.
Yes. But we do know there is water pollution, we know we have to clean up.
And the the MS four permit requirements that we've gone through tonight, I don't want to say they're totally independent of mass BP's process because there's overlapping and intersecting approaches, but they exist regardless, maybe that's why I say of what mass BP does with the standard. These these departments have got the wrong books today. I think many municipalities struggle with not how to try to coordinate or integrate with what a mass BP may be doing. But as you noted, it's frustrating to try to figure that out. So, uh, one thing to just maybe remember is that the permit requirements that we talked about, they're there on the books and regardless of what happened.
I have sensed that they are trying to fix years of stuff. Well, I think it's unfortunate that we have two huge law forces that pour tremendous amount of fertilizer and they won't sit on the ground. So we got their inclusion factor, she herself, so. And that cuts your fertilizer usage really off.
That's what we try to encourage applicants to limit fertilizers, organic and that kind of stuff. That's why we write these conditions in projects to try to help do the part to help clean up too.
Well, you tried to go back and forth to something, such a book that's been a hundred years.
Yeah.
So. Well, thank you.
Are we ready for any public input on this stuff?
This meeting.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Are you going to open this public?
I just want to see it there.
Yeah, you want to go?
There you go.
All right, yes.
I'm just curious if we can ask through the chair of Forsley and Witten, is there anything that will affect the MS four permit? If we do not make any immediate changes to anything per one acre in regulations?
Thank you.
Say that again.
If we don't make any immediate changes to anything under forty thou, or under forty three thousand five hundred sixty square feet of disturbance, is there anything that will affect the MS four permit?
It has to be in there for one acre or more.
So I'll ask it again. Is there anything that we have to do under one acre in these regulations that will affect the MS four permit? If we don't make any changes to anything that's less than an acre, does it affect that permit at all?
No.
Good. So I would suggest that if you have immediate changes that you need to make to comply with this, because it's all about complying with this permit, if we don't have to make these changes about adding in things that are going to happen on single family home sites, which are acre or less than the town of situat, there is no immediate need to make those changes with this set of regulations. I would suggest that you go to town meeting first, change the bylaw because you're expanding jurisdiction on the bylaw when you don't have the authority under the bylaw to change that. So adding things like if we think you're eighty percent or less, uh, then you're going to be okay. But if you're getting close to the threshold, we still want to know about it now. There's no reason to push that through right now. So if town meeting wants to say, yes, you can have authority to go after people that are eighty percent or more, then let the town meeting decide that. Once you put the regulation in, you're really, you're jumping the gun. But I agree with the stuff that they have to comply with for this permit. Put it in right now, we'll support that. But I think the biggest thing for, and again, I speak to the developers or homeowners, are these changes that are happening on less than an acre of land and they're choking out people from being able to use their properties.
So I did talk to town council about this. Town council raised eight percent as a concern. We still advise the board to do it now so the board doesn't have to keep opening the regulations up and having more public hearings. Because you have to have a public hearing to change your regulations.
I hear you. You okay, you have a consideration, we'll link it up as well.
I think as Karen alluded to, there was a number of stormwater committee meetings prior to COVID and that was great. We had a couple of design engineers, developers, your peer reviewers, and we all raised the red flags and said, something wrong with the stormwater bylaw. It's not working. There's parts that get taken advantage of, there's people that get under the radar. We have new houses that go with no stormwater permit, yet we have very modest small houses with small additions that are getting whacked in the storm. And the minimum cost, if you require stormwater permit in town situat, I would tell you it's going to add a minimum of ten thousand dollars or something. Minimum goes up from there for the simplest of projects. So the single family home stuff, I think we really should talk about and go back and forth on the definition of impervious by making it so that everything has to be considered solid in bringing more people into requiring that ten thousand dollar plus stormwater permit. You're not incentivizing those people to do any of the green infrastructure, the pervious pavements, the pervious patios, the gravel driveways. If you have to design and get the stormwater permit as if it's a solid surface, they're going to put in the solid surface. So it's, it's counterintuitive, but it doesn't incentivize. The NOAA fourteen numbers, that's great if you adopt that standard. I would ask, though, if you adopt that standard, double check the zoning bylaw and the subdivision rules and regulations that those get updated as well. Because I have in other towns, Norwell for example, the zoning bylaw requires the Cornell numbers, the stormwater permit requires NOAA fourteen. I end up doing two separate drainage reports with two different sets of rainfall precipitation data and you can't comply with everything for both. You're either going to comply with this set of data or that set of data. Make it uniform across the board with the other regulations that this is. Yep. As far as the MS four compliance, I have no objections to complying with MS four. I think it's going to be extremely hard, if not impossible, to comply with phosphorus removal on three nineteen ninety five homes on small lots. Groundwater in this town is typically only down two to three feet. You're not going to be able to do the infiltration devices and comply with setbacks to septic systems for phosphorus removal. I think we're going to have to look at that closely. I have no problem with that on these forty thousand square foot or one acre sites that it's mandatory for MS four. But on the small lots, like in the R two zoning district or the R rezoning district, that's going to be a major, major problem coming down there. So I kind of echo the same concern with ninety percent TSS. I don't know on a ten thousand square foot lot, how you're going to comply with ninety percent TSS. I also see in the regulations that you can't have stormwater B M Ps like an infiltration trench or anything below ground within ten feet of the property lines as proposed. And that's going to cause even less area up on these small lots, which we have a number of them now. So we do need to look at, when we were meeting as a stormwater group prior to COVID, we talked about different thresholds for the stormwater permit, maybe based on what your lot size was or which zoning district. I don't think.
You did not agree that it worked.
And we got cut off and the discussions never finished. We need to have those discussions again because we have a house like the one I did at the corner of Jericho Road in Beaufort. It's a humongous house, it's four thousand square feet.
It's taking bogus odds.
No, no stormwater permit required whatsoever on that lot, there's not one piece of storm. Yet I have a small house on Keno Drive off of Hunter Way that's modest, thirteen hundred square feet. The people want to put a two car garage on a twenty four by twenty four garage. Now the house is going to be eighteen hundred square feet. They get whacked with a stormwater permit, possible for thirty thousand dollars to improve. It's not fair across the board.
So let me speak to that. We don't see, I don't get to see all the permits to sign off on several of them. And many of them, you know, should have stormwater permits and I don't get to, I don't get to see it.
I'll, I'll go on the record that I believe every new single family home should have a storm. But if the bylaw that was written right now makes it so that it doesn't require it, we're going to follow the bylaw and if that one doesn't require it, let's fix that loophole. Let's work together, we'll give that, but let's work on some of the other stuff. So again, the MS four compliance stuff, I don't think you're going to have any problems with builders, developers, homeowners. I agree with you that, that's better for everyone. But the other issues that are written here, I think you're going to have a lot of, I think there needs to be a lot of discussion.
I was not yet, I didn't have to call this chapter earlier. Yes, you didn't.
No, no, it was private and we haven't worked. No, no, it was private, and we haven't worked in. I think so, we had, we have developers, we had consulting engineers, we have other people, so, no, the board, it never came to the board. Because it wasn't ready to. Because there was major disagreement between what the developers want and the interest of protecting the town.
Anything else?
I mean, so there's really only two things in here that, that really are objectionable to them. And that would be the eighty percent stuff, that would, that would be the eighty percent stuff. Right?
That's one of them, yeah.
You added water resource protection district stuff, that section as well. My concern is just right.
It's already.
It's already in the zoning bylaws.
It's already ninety percent in the water resource protection district, we're not changing that.
All I'm doing is going back to what the bylaw says, what the authority, the planning board has to act under the bylaw that was voted in at town meeting by everybody at town meeting. And I, I watched this implement, conservation tried to pass ton of regulations and then go to town meeting to say, hey, well, we already have the regulations, so might as well just vote this in the bylaw. And they tried to go to two hundred foot instead of a hundred foot buffer zones, they did all kinds of things, it just blew up on them. My only point is, stuff that doesn't have to be in here now, we'll come to one more public meeting, that's all we need to change this stuff. But I don't see a reason to do it right now if it doesn't affect this permit. The purpose of doing this is to comply with that extra permit. So let's do that, let's comply with the permit and, and keep working. But we had some good working meetings, Karen, I mean, there were disagreements on some different things, but I think we were starting to make some, some headway on some of that. And you're right, we had, we had a lot of players that were in the room trying to figure out how to do it. And it's not a simple thing, and it shouldn't just go through because we think, let's just put it through. Because it's, it's there, let's do it. I think it makes more sense to wait, to try to work, maybe bring in, you know, another planning board member to go through that so that the engineers can explain what the problems are with implementing these things. There's reasons why the, the state says under an acre, you don't have to do anything. There's a reason for that. So, and, and the same thing with the best management practices. Anything under four lots, it doesn't work, it doesn't make any sense, but yet we have a bylaw that regulates all of that stuff. And it's, like Greg says, it's almost impossible to meet that stuff. And you guys have seen it on projects, and we strive to, to meet the stuff, but we continually grant waivers because you have to, or nothing's going to happen in this town. And, and we need housing, it's number one push for the state. So let's choke it out a little bit more and worry about it. Now ten thousand square foot lots are buildable under the state requirements, they just changed that, or try to build on that. No, you can't just choke everybody out of this, let's think about it a little bit longer, please. It's not just for me, because I do new houses, I don't do additions, it's for the people of the town of Cituit, don't choke them up, work, work with them. Please.
I will take comments, you know, I prefer the comments be written so that they can be gone back before, and, you know, I'm happy to meet with somebody after October fifteenth.
Sean, do you have anything to add to this?
From the program manager. The names are all right. So I'm trying to fly with all the pieces of that. I was poorly with the regulations.
Yeah, but you understand compliance with the MS four permit, that's basically what we're trying to do. All I'm saying is we don't need some of this in order to do that.
Well, with all due respect, this takes a lot of time.
Absolutely.
It involved tears.
I don't think I missed any of those meetings.
She's in layover, she did a lot of work here, so I can see both sides of that coin, doing, doing well once we really get control back to. The other issue that you know to have is that is the board changes continue this way. So that, that also means something of the stuff going on.
Yeah, but I think you'll have the, you'll have the public's support if it's done correctly. So I think the board, it'll be easier for the board, I think, to do that.
Okay.
I'll certainly support if it works. And, and I rely on the engineers as well to, that are designing the projects, to say whether it's going to work and help people or whether it's not going to. So I'd be the first one to speak in favor of it if the engineers say this works.
Discuss it. If you could submit your comments, everybody, I would appreciate that, yes.
I was just going to point out, uh, one thing that under that nine point four, talking about the water quality VMPs, um, it does list three ways that that could be met. One of those ways is if you can retain one inch on the site that could be in rain barrels, and, I know there's high ground monographe, but there are creative ways to try to retain runoff and not have to worry about fancy VMPs. Or, or a combination of those, so I just wanted to, we hadn't mentioned that before, so I just wanted to point that out.
The, the problem with that is exactly what we had in Condes and Lowes Cituit and the project that you guys approved tonight where you can't get one inch of the entire site to do that. You could take an average and do it that way, but we have a sloping site like we have in Cituit all over the place. You can't possibly get the first foot of the property if it's going up to the road. That one inch is going to go the road, so if you can average it, you could probably need it on every project. But yeah, in the way it's written, we have to ask for waivers for that, just you can't, no one's going to need it, yeah.
Lots to be loved, lots to try to love. Anything else? Anybody on the line? No, no, we watched the. You want to say that?
Alright, so you'll be having a stormwater public hearing in October. And if you have to continue it, then you have to continue it to December. And then we're running short. We have, we have too many big projects before the board right now with too many, with too many major issues. And we want to give every applicant the time they deserve when they come in for their public hearing.
So gentlemen, if you could submit those comments that we discussed, well, I also appreciate all your input. Anything else you want to say? Anything for your representation?
I just wish there was some way that we could somehow, some way, even simply, that we end up, this is not to be considered as a criticism or anything, that we ended with so much regulation and so much that it's not only hard to understand, but it's hard to implement. And I wish, and it, it just, it just with the state is the only target for that. And that's really difficult. And, you know, stuff has been changed over the last, over the many years. And you see, what is that, I don't know. But if we can somehow come to some type of consensus to make.
This is the third huge thing that we've had to organize in two years.
Well, after the A D U, we had M B T A, then the A D U's, A D U's, and now this. And that is a law I worked, and you know what? That's why I work here, we get paid big bucks to do this.
And the interpretation I was reading is that, you know, I don't take A D U's as a, they, they think it's about what I was doing and they keep, and they have not approved that law, like that, if we turn to general, still has put stuff on another like this.
No, no, number thirty-eight.
Thirty, thirty-six.
October thirteenth is our magic date now.
So, so we, we killed ourselves, so we're, like, you know, it's unbelievable. Unbelievable, and then, and then just stall, 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 instead of go through the facts, so. We had to say the frustration fell around.
And then, then Art was in the paper, it's on a week ago Sunday, about trying to simplify building and, and getting things done. It's probably more for the city of Boston, because they can delay anything.
That's why they exempt the smaller sites.
I, I have.
That's the issue that everybody has, is the single homeowner that wants to do something. And what happens is you make it so tight, believe me, they find a way around it.
They always do.
And, and to Karen, like Karen says, they may be at ninety-nine percent and go over it. They could be at sixty percent and still go over it because they're not going to call you if they're putting a patio on their house. The permit is hired by the building department, and those are the, those are the people that are going to do that, it's just going to happen. They don't know any better. They just, they call a landscaper and they go out and they cut the trees, they change stuff. It's not the people generally that walk in the door, generally, and say, so, some people that commit, get the permit, know what they're doing, and then violate it anyways. That, that, that happens.
Exactly, exactly.
That, that happens, I'm, I'm not saying it doesn't happen.
A lot more than you think, and those are the calls that we get during the big rainstorms.
I know.
Those are the calls we get.
But somehow we have to come to some type of medium of comments.
Go ahead.
And it's not going to be easy. We have to get it done.
We're, I mean, we're putting time in on it as well, again, we're meeting meetings before, you know, we're making as much of you guys.
We should change the major premise of the stormwater bylaw. The major premise of the stormwater bylaw is, you know, the, the thresholds, fifteen thousand square feet, twenty-five percent increase in impervious. I don't think you should change those.
I'm not suggesting.
Those have been in place since two thousand and ten.
So lots of thank you both, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to open to the new business and all of our interesting stuff.
Give me a minute.
And second, actually, before we go, I've been, town council is good, the whole same standard. I'm just letting you know, I'm a minister, but it's letting you know. I was not wanting to. No, I know, I'm, I'm just telling you, what they want, what they want and what is, is right for the town are about the same.
I understand that, I'm well aware of that, but part of that problem is, and you, you said it, you don't see the permits.
I don't see all of them.
I don't understand, and that, and Morse is right, that would be four thousand square foot, should have been a stormwater permit on it. But it didn't because you, you know, I want to know who's in charge, that has been my goal for the last eighteen years.
The old commissioner was in charge of sending stuff to, for, for sign off for building permits and checking the people that it applies.
But it's not doing it this week.
About on every project, no, which is why, you know, he signed off on thirty-three Beater Dam, and lo and behold, you know, it says right on the plan, thirty-nine percent increase in impervious surface. And, and then it says nineteen point four percent increase in impervious, and, and we didn't see it. And, you know, when I saw the water, filthy water running up and going right to the harbor, that's when, that's when it comes out.
I agree. I agree, an embrace. Move the minutes of September eleventh.
Is that the other paper?
I.
No.
No. Do we have any new days on weekends? Well, we have, like, that was seven years, we'll do that next. Who's going where?
So long.
I don't.
I'm back on the sending you here.
Yes, you must, so in two days. No, okay, so I, I have to. Conservation, uh, I'm going to tell you that I think we are the only board that reads this on the bylaws. Conservation, uh, has Mr. Trix project to talk again on the facial net. They don't know the difference between an A D U and a shed. They can't figure out about cesspools versus septic systems, how far away they have to be. Uh, maybe let's go to nation, um, there was a lot of stuff about destabilizing the barrier beach, so that project has continued because of one of the newest members of the zoning board has a big background. Uh, at, on conservation, there's a big background, and it's a legitimate. So that's been continued to our own way. And what's considerable to me is the three gas station. I'll be one of the files that goes to violation, you should not have taken two meetings. The zoning board, when you open up your own zoning bylaws, they are not in control of funding, that is the purview of the planning board. And they wrote special permit for a Mr. Bush to now conduct more than a from three mobile gas station or snowball, whatever the hell that's up there. Um, when I stood up to say that that was not their purview, they told me they could do whatever they want. I said, it's right here in the bylaw in the, in the category of uses. They were just like, yeah, you can say all you want, that's all. Yeah, and that's not the first time that's happened with the zoning bylaw, with the zoning. So I think you have to watch that very, very carefully. They're very young, they're very inexperienced, and they say that to you, by this, they open your meetings. And I think that, like I said, if you're the legal advisor, you'll need to go to all the meetings, you can be there physically. And that's, like I said, I was there for two years, or this should not have happened. I don't know yet why, town council was online and they didn't stand up to say, yeah, you're violating the bylaw, they didn't, he didn't say a word. And I don't know why. So now we're going to have a parking place on the corner of three A and Miller Road. So, but apparently the issue be that they were going to fix the trucks, but they don't have a mechanic in that gas station, so I don't, I don't think. So that's three businesses we run out of one of the last. Three days, so. And that is it, they are busy.
Alright, so H E Ball have A D U by Lotto, Otto and Thirteenth. Saturday, this meeting this week for eighteen to twenty countryway. I just got a copy late September of the letter from Mass Historic. I'm not, are you watching movie? Uh, I'm, I'm a little uncertain what they're recommending, but they, they say the site is significant art development. So, uh, we have the first, we have the pre-construction meeting for Havill school today. So they don't, the dig this isn't quite activated yet, it's a couple more days, but they're anticipating everything is going to be ready for Monday, so. Erosion control has been put up, or, or yearly erosion control on Monday, but they're going to try to start clearing next week to get this, this activated.
Erosion control is in place on Countryway too. And that, would they clean that big lot?
Oh, yeah, I have been up there. I've been up there. Seaside, Cituit, I have a sidewalk, um, I need forty-five, they anticipate top coating starting the week of ten six. So hopefully they'll be ready.
So they fixed all the driveways?
Well, that's why I wanted to say, and I wanted to see the driveway, the curbing. And, uh, you know, he asked to come in on the twenty-third for sure redemption, I'm going to tell him no.
Yeah.
He can't come in until November because he still need to ask the final ask really after you pay. I'm going to tell him no. And I, if they don't, I might do non enter sign up, I would, I would hold up a million dollars for that.
And that's the size of the.
Yeah, right, so, um, I do have one other item I want to talk about.
I'd make a motion to return.
Second.
Aye.
Welcome, thank you. Bye, thank you.
Thank you.